...to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting West Burlington City Council, order roll call please.
Crowner?
Here.
Raleigh?
Here.
Hightmeier?
Here.
Lees?
Here.
Waterman?
Here.
Need to perfect approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support. Motion to support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carrying, consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Motion to support, approve consent agenda items one through nine, which are to minutes from regular city council meeting on April fourth, approve payment Birlington Municipal Water Works, approve payment Great River Business Health, approve payment to Kel-Tec, approve payment to Des Moines County Regional Waste Commission, approve payment to three E Electrical, approve payment to Des Moines County I.T. Department, approve the clerk's monthly financial report for February twenty eighteen, and approve the claims in the amount of five hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carrying, staff reports. Dan?
Uh, just two things, we had, I don't know if you, anybody heard, but we had a little glitch on gear today with the, the company that, the traffic control company that was putting out the barricades, barricaded everybody in on the west side. It didn't take very long for people to call me, uh, but they got that straightened out. Um, and I let them know that they should probably communicate a little bit better to the people along there, but they weren't even supposed to do that, they just put barricades out, completely closed Houston Street, so those people that live back there were stuck back there and, but they fixed it. And Rod asked me a question about the garbage can issue, uh, about the, how if somebody could, uh, request a different sized can, I, uh, Levine's pretty much is all buying the big ones, but if somebody wanted to request a small one, they probably should call Levine's and themselves and see if that, they can work that out with them, 'cause I don't know how many of the small ones they're gonna even buy.
Well, besides Rod having a few phone calls, so did I, and I told him that they could come up here and look at the two that they have and either call Levine's or tell Katie or anything, 'cause I didn't know how the-
Yeah, 'cause if you look at these, they're not really very much difference in size.
Yeah, and, uh, some of the older people did not want the large one, 'cause they felt that they'd have a hard time getting them, besides that, they said they didn't have room, so, that's all I-
When Dennis was here, he presented he was gonna have two sizes. That's what he presented us, that's what he told us.
Yeah, and I think, I think he is gonna have two, but I think he's mostly ordering the big ones.
Yeah, because-
That's fine, and I don't care. He presented to us that he would have two sizes and people could have either size. Likewise, I think it would be better to organize that through City Hall than having all these random people calling what number at Levine's.
That's, we could do that, I just thought maybe the, we'd skip one thing in the relay, but you have a good point too.
Well, we could easier keep a little chart, I mean, I know two people are gonna request the smaller one. Stop me while I was picking up kids from school, and I, since that was made available to us from the get-go, I don't, I don't think we can waffle back on that now.
No, I, I think that we can make it happen, but Levine's gotta know pretty soon probably when they, what they order, but-
That's why I made the suggestion for the people to come up, look at the two trash cans and tell Katie, um, what they want if they did so, so while they were paying their water bill. That's all.
Anything else for Dan?
Yeah, I got one more thing. Um, I noticed out west of town here a little ways, I don't know if this is you or Randy or whoever it is, west, going west on Mount Pleasant Street, there's a, another brand-new crossway in, crossing those four lanes of highway, we put in another, somebody put in another crossway.
Yeah, Randy's guys did that.
We did that work?
Mm-hmm.
We put in that culvert and all that gravel?
Yeah.
So, are we gonna allow anybody that wants one of them to have one of them now? Is that the new program?
That one's pretty far away from, 'cause some of the rest of them, but-
Oh, it's not far away from all the others, there's another one within thirty feet.
Oh, well. That, they were gonna bring trucks into that extension office, and that was why they requested them?
So they got okay, 'cause they're the Iowa Extension Office?
We've put in two other ones that, when people have asked.
And, and is our practice now that we're gonna do all those as gravel instead of cement?
I, we were gonna, at one point though, one we did by the motorcycle shop, I think we were gonna do is gravel and then do something different after it got packed in, but we haven't talked about it since then.
I would suggest you get a handle on this. We need to have a rule and a regulation of when we put those in and how many feet apart, and whether they're gravel or whether they're cement. Meanwhile, we might as well take out all that grass, all the way from the edge of West Burlington to the truck stop, and then his boys won't have to mow it anymore. Great idea. And then people can just cross wherever they wanna cross.
Did you make a motion?
I will.
Well, eventually, it's gonna become cost prohibitive, we probably just have two lanes out that way anyway.
Well, that won't be for another year and a half, when, when I'm off of here, so.
Anything else? Randy?
Just a couple things, Broadway's coming along, they're gonna be opening up the driveways on the east side, so if those businesses can get in. Um, on the west side, they poured a couple driveways, finished those up today, they probably won't get opened up until Monday, with the cooler weather like this, the concrete's not setting up very fast, but they put in quite a bit of effort trying to get everything taken care of, considering the weather that we've had. Tomorrow morning around seven or seven-thirty, W.L. Millers supposed to start milling off the asphalt over on Gear Avenue, so hopefully in a couple days out there, they'll have that taken care of, and then the contractor can come in behind them and do some full-death patching out there, and if the weather permits, that should go pretty quickly, so it's gonna be kind of, kind of a mess out on Gear Avenue, but it's just part of the progress, so things are, things are starting to happen again for the construction season.
Anything for Randy? Frank?
I just wanted to share a letter that I received this past week from behavioral health specialist out at Great River Medical Center. The letter goes as, "I wanted to take a minute to reach out to your department regarding a couple of encounters I have personally had with Officer Parker over the last month in the ER at Great River Medical Center. With both in instances, Officer Parker has shown commendable amount of patience and understanding for the mental health patients that require West Burlington P.D. involvement. Officer Parker did a wonderful job with the patients, and I personally wanted to reach out to say how much we appreciate his ability to assist in de-escalating situations with patients whom we've currently in a mental health crisis. His ability to minimize the threat and harm to patients and our staff does not go unnoticed. Please ensure Officer Parker is aware, we appreciate his friendly personality and his willingness to assist with some of our great challenging patients. Thank you kindly, Chelsea Hoyer." We've deal with a lot of mental health patients, and it's very easy to get disgusted, um, but our officers have all done a fantastic job, and, and then does not go unnoticed, and I'd like to commend Officer Parker for, um, the way he's, does his job. Any questions?
Appreciate the letter. I'm sure you shared it with Officer Parker?
Yes, put it in his personnel file too, so, yes.
Anything for Chief? Tom?
Uh, you may have noticed that a lot of those cars that were brought in out there by the truck stop at the old Beckman property are gone now, um, they're working on cleaning some more of that property up, I think they're doing tremendous job without me having to stay on top of them, and I'm really appreciative of the fact that she's willing to do that. Worked with S.E.C. to, in emergency management, try and come up with some severe weather shelter areas on the campus, uh, we did a walkthrough on Monday and pointed out some various areas, and we'll be working some more with them regarding that, um, and the upgrade of their fire, and, uh, they're also doing a law enforcement enunciation panel, you know, for any active shooter-type situations, working with them on that, that's part of their upgrades they've been doing lately. Um, had a couple fireworks inquiries and dealing with them, it's right now like about three vendors will be in town, two tents and one indoors at Menards again, as it has been in the past. On the fire side, the guys did some training on Monday night, and we were smoking up the building, we had the alarm panel that said disarmed, but it set the alarm off in case anybody called you, fire department was not on fire. Um, we're working through that issue with Permar on that, but they're looking forward to warm weather so they can actually get out and, and do some outdoor training, they're starting to get a little bit of that cabin fever like all of us, but they've been doing a really good job, and I'm proud of how they've been going about things.
Do they have anything for Sean? Kelly, you got anything going on? Leslie? Okay. I meant to ask you, Randy, you notice by any chance the, somebody's doing locates out here, um, by the post office, there's like, uh, it looked like gas, actually, you got any idea what?
No, I haven't, I haven't been watching the locate tickets lately, but I can look tomorrow and find out.
It, it looks like it's just kind of a half circle that's, you know, the main is on the other side of the street.
Right, no, I'll, I'll have to ask-
It's going straight towards their gas meter.
I'll have to ask Troy, he takes care of all the locates, so.
It's whoever uses yellow paint.
Yeah, that's gas.
Yes. Alrighty. Rod, you got anything else going on?
Nothing else, sir, thank you.
Rick?
No, sir.
Royce?
Nope.
Trace?
I'm good.
Al?
I'm good.
Alright. This time, uh, we'll have a community report from Alliant Energy. Nancy?
Thank you. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
You know, I always like to come and check in at least, uh, once a year, whether you need me or not.
You've got the snow off.
Yes. I also, I, um, just wanna thank you for the time. My name is Nancy Snod, I'm an account manager with Alliant Energy. We have an office, uh, at five twenty-seven South Roosevelt, and we are the local gas and electric utility. We have forty-seven employees that work out of that office, including management and field personnel. In addition to that, we do have a local generation plant at forty-two eighty-two Sullivan Saloo Road, and there's thirty-eight employees reporting in that facility. I do have some, uh, community involvement and investment data, these are two thousand and seventeen numbers, and a lot of this information is for Des Moines County, and then I do have some West Burlington-specific information. We do try to be a good partner in the community, and one of the things we try to do is proactively communicate about where the resources are and where we may be able to support some of the initiatives that you have. Um, I, uh, wanted to mention Chief, both Chiefs, up until May first, the window is still open until May first for our hometown safety grants, and these are really good grants, the way they've changed in the last couple years is we no longer require a matching donation. What we used to do is if a fire department had a pancake breakfast or something, we would match the money that you made. Well, now there's no matching requirement, you can simply fill out a request, the grant applications are online, I think, Dan, I might have sent you that email that you could share with these guys, and think about something that you might need in the way of safety gear, these are focused on safety equipment. So, I had one, um, fire department, I'm gonna call them out because they're just a little group, Pulaski, Iowa, they had seventeen guys, and they needed to buy those special liners for the fire helmets, and he said they were a hundred dollars apiece, well, that adds up quite a bit, and I'm glad we were able to help them with the grant for a big part of that. So, think about something that you might need for your team, and I would encourage you to get a grant application in, okay? Um, some of our foundation support in the Des Moines County area in two thousand and seventeen totaled about eight thousand dollars, some of the groups we supported were Transitions of Des Moines County, um, with emergency and transitional housing, we also supported Young House Family Services and Bridges Out of Poverty, and then the Southeastern Community College got a nice, uh, grant for their Chad Youth Program. We also, uh, helped the Southeastern Community College plant some trees, uh, on their new campus where they built the new, uh, medical, uh, teaching facility, and the grant award for trees was nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, and this was a great, uh, planting day we had over there, the Chad Youth Kids even turned out to help us put those trees in the ground, and then the branching-out group came and helped train people on the proper way to plant those trees, so that was a really good day. Um, of course, some of the main ways that we support the community is with their electric infrastructure investments, and in West Burlington, we spent twenty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars on electric infrastructure in two thousand seventeen, and then the gas infrastructure investments were greater than that at eighty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Uh, we always try to meet with Dan and the mayor in January and let you know about what our summer plans look like, 'cause that is the construction season, and I think a lot of things were laid out at that time, uh, pretty standard stuff, no major projects. And then also, we're a taxpayer, and in West Burlington and Des Moines County, I do have the tax data, in West Burlington, our taxes paid were seventy-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, and then in Des Moines County, it was about one point eight million dollars. Um, some of the other ways we support is through our energy efficiency program involvement. Uh, last year, we had some pretty robust participation in Des Moines County with two thousand two hundred and twenty-two rebates paid out, and the incentives totaled just under a million dollars at nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, we also encourage the dealers to participate, because when they promote, um, efficient heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and things like that, uh, they also do, uh, have a partnership with us, and the dealer incentives payout were seventy-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. So, um, we're just trying to, you know, make sure that we're communicating about our different avenues of support and working with you on things that we may have an opportunity to, uh, help you with your goals. Um, also, the sponsorship, Kelly, don't forget to put in the request for the fireworks, we always like to help with that where we can, and then you can count on me to show up with golf umbrellas for your rainfall tickets. But other than that, Mr. Mayor, is there anything else I can do for you?
No, appreciate you coming in, uh, give us a report.
Okay, I, I enjoy it, I appreciate the time.
The trees, uh, are they open, is that still open?
Yeah, yes, there's, there's two types of tree programs, the branching-out grants, those are residential tree programs, and they kind of rotate those around our service territory, and last year, Des Moines County was not in the rotation, so I would not be surprised if Des Moines County did come up for our fall, uh, branching-out, and that's where we would send postcards to, uh, residential customers. Now, the branching-out grants, if you had a park in mind, or if you were repopulating where you had cleared trees, like for the Emerald Ash Borer, or you had a public space, by all means, you should submit for a, um, branching-out grant, um, and Dan, I can send you the link for that, okay? And there are, uh, two award seasons, the spring and the fall, so think about when you would like to, um, you know, address your opportunity, and then, uh, certainly you can submit for a grant, and-
Do you know what type of trees, is it just-
Now, the great thing now with the relief for the residential, they are prescribed, there might be eight varieties that you get to choose from for the residential, but when it's a branching-out grant, we would give, it's a, you know, with the branching-out team, the Department of Natural Resources and Alliant Energy, that would be a grant. So, what you generally do when you're submitting your application, you tell them what your plans are. You might say, "We're, we're planning on five different varieties, ten of each, in this space, in this timeframe, for this purpose." So, they would look for a detailed grant request from you, and it would be great if you had a plan in mind, okay? And I will say this, one of the goals of these tree planting programs is to diversify the urban forests, because we have way too many maple trees, and we need a diverse forest, because look what happened with the Emerald Ash Borer, the ash trees were just, you know, blighted, and then a few years ago, with the Dutch Elm, that was blighted, so as long as we have some robust variety, it's less vulnerable for one species to be impacted when you have, um, a pestilence like that.
Did, are they gonna redo the city again, the Iowa State, or DNR?
Oh, yeah, the DNR is gonna do another, uh, survey.
'Cause we did that a few years ago, they went around and marked all, all the trees, all the Emerald Ash Borer.
Yep. Yep.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
Nancy, so that you know, you have already sent us a check for the Fourth of July, thank you very much.
Oh, we did, okay, got ahead of myself.
Checking very quick.
Thank you very much. Well, and you know what, I was looking at these, this is all information, so good.
I told you that, Rod, you're gonna send it in.
Yeah, now, you know what, I'll, Rod, you know why you got that check?
'Cause I asked.
That's right, somebody had to send in the application, that's right, okay.
Yeah, I found it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, dear.
Thanks, Nancy.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, the other thing we got is the proclamation to Teach Children Safe Day, so I'll read the proclamation, and we got a couple of students that probably wanna talk a little bit. Whereas the American Bankers Association's Education Foundation established a national Teach Children the Safe Day to spotlight the importance of teaching our nation's youth about saving money. They have set aside April twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, for bankers across America to teach young people about how money works and how to use it wisely, and whereas, according to the U.S. Department of Commerce, our small, low national savings rate rivals the rates during the Great Depression, and whereas the current economy, rising number of Americans, personal bankruptcies, especially with young adults under twenty-five years of age, college students graduating with increasing student loan debt, the increase in consumer credit card debt, the lack of school personal finance classes, and the lack of adequate retirement savings emphasizes the importance of introducing children to the concept of saving money as a first step to their healthy financial future, and whereas recognizing that young Ameri, that young Iowans are our leaders of tomorrow, bankers and the Iowa Bankers Association are taking a stand to combat financial literacy. Now therefore, we, the City Council West Burlington, Council of the City of West Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, as Teach Children the Save Day. Good saving habits start early, and healthy money skills last a lifetime. And, wanna introduce your students?
Yes, um, well-
Introduce yourself, too.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Schuster, and I'm, uh, F and M's Financial Literacy Coordinator, and if I could speak a little bit and then-
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we're here today, um, representing F and M, uh, Bank and Trust's, uh, Financial Literacy Programs, specifically F and M Kids Bank and F and M Teen Bank. We have two student-led banks in West Burlington, F and M Kids Bank, which is open every Friday at the elementary school, and F and M Teen Bank, which is open every Tuesday at the middle high school. We have a total of thirty-two student employees in the West Burlington School District. Students in kindergarten through twelfth grade, uh, can have a savings account that earns them four and a half percent interest. This year is a special year for us at F and M, we are celebrating our twentieth year of F and M Kids Bank, twenty years of teaching children the importance of saving, twenty years of teaching students the basics of employment, from filling out a job application, interview process, hiring, training, scheduling, and working. In addition to the school banks, F and M works with the eighth-grade financial literacy teacher at West Burlington Middle School. We provide interactive classroom presentations that encompass everything from savings, checking, identity theft, credit, and more. Our program was designed to encourage students to save for their future, to teach them basic financial skills, so they can use those skills to become productive citizens. We want to teach students that regardless of what their future holds, each one of them will need to know how to navigate the financial world. Um, and today, I have a couple of students who would like to, uh, speak on behalf of their bank. First, I have Andrew Elmore with West Burlington Elementary, he is a fifth-grade student.
Hello, my name is Andrew Elmore, and I am here to represent F and M Kids Bank at West Burlington Elementary. We have a total of one, one hundred four student accounts with a total of forty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and twelve cents in the accounts. We also have fourteen educator accounts. Thank you for following, for allowing me to speak on behalf of F and M Kids Bank at West Burlington Elementary.
Thank you, Andrew.
And next I have, uh, Abby Benz, she is an eighth grader, or a seventh, pardon me, seventh grader at, uh, West Burlington Middle School.
Hello, I'm Abby Benz, a seventh-grade student at West Burlington Middle School. I'm here to represent F and M Teen Bank. At West Burlington Middle and High School, we have ninety student accounts with a total of ninety-one thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents in the accounts. We also have five educator accounts. The total saved in all area F and M Kids Bank and F and M Teen Bank accounts is five hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. The total saved in educator accounts is four hundred and ninety thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of F and M's educational accounts.
Welcome, thank you.
And, thank you.
I've got a proclamation here, I'll let you take along as soon as Kelly signs it.
Those are some impressive numbers, kids.
Yes, they are.
Very impressive.
Thanks very much.
Thanks. Anybody have any questions?
Well, just thanks a lot for coming. Good job, kids.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job, kids.
When do we get those, Ray?
Sign up.
Charlie? I'm just, I'm gonna go become a teacher, or something, or work up there or something.
Thank you, Charlie, see ya.
It's great, though, I mean, that's-
See you, Andrew.
That's impressive.
Except now we just lost our audience.
When did, uh, when did you start with the high school, with the junior high to high school?
This is our fourth year.
Fourth year?
Mm-hmm, for the middle, middle slash high school.
Good, good deal. So, a lot of kids have done, as they're trance, you know, transitioning from elementary to high school, they keep their accounts going.
Correct, yes, and they can have them from kindergarten through twelfth grade, yes, learning four and a half.
Excellent.
College kids.
Yeah.
My, my grandkids have been in that ever since they started school, and-
Oh, yes, yep, and his granddaughter's one of our employees also.
She learned that from grandma.
Years ago, Mr. Marlowe had me come up there to, you know, to, to see one of the Fridays, and I was amazed how that operation works. It's pretty impressive with all the kids.
It is.
Well, thank you. You're welcome to stay, don't bail out on us.
I'm a resident here at West Burlington, now I feel more comfortable to come next, next month.
Anyone wishing to address the council matters that we did discuss or didn't discuss? Go to new business then. I'm number one's consider payment of Mike Nelson's concrete for work on the Broadway Street construction, amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
Motion to approve, or?
Motion to support, any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Motion carrying. I have number two's consider payment of Leander Construction for work on a wastewater treatment plant in amount of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars and sixteen cents.
Motion to approve, support.
Motion to support, any discussion?
Randy? How's it looking?
It's coming along really well, we've had very few issues down there.
And I'm assuming we still got money on this account? Them's big payments.
Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carrying. I'm number three's consider accepting two thousand and eighteen goal-setting report.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'm number four, so consider second reading of an ordinance limiting section 105.10 of the city code related to waste storage containers.
So move.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number five, so consider setting public hearing date to amend budget for fiscal year 2017-18, May 16th at 6:00 P.M.
So move. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Anybody have any old business?
What, what are we doing about this water meter deal?
We're getting an up-to-date proposal that as soon as we get it from the company, we'll put it on the agenda to approve.
Try to... I just, I had to leave early that night and I didn't know for sure how you all left it.
We did, we had got a quote for budget purposes, and so now we're going to put together one that's probably more accurate since it's, that's been a few months ago since we got that one. So we're getting a new quotation for that work and...
And your thought process is we'd like to...
I'd like to do all of it, one project, and yeah.
Okay.
With the original quote, they weren't sure what, if we would want to consider doing them all at once or over time. There was a, if we did a bulk purchase, there might have been, we can get them a little bit cheaper, so that's what he's trying to work up some numbers for that now.
All right.
Let's let them do it.
And letting them...
And having them, yeah, them do the work.
Which I think is a good idea.
Yeah, he was going to give us some numbers on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's working on that now.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All righty. Anyone wishing to address council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? Nobody's running up here. All right, we're going to have a closed session, the, within, closed session in accordance with the Iowa Code, Chapter 21.5, Section J, to discuss the purchase of real estate. Need a motion?
Move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Call vote.
Please? I'm sorry, please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
Carried. Well, we can go in there for a few minutes, or you guys are leaving, we'll stay out here. No, we won't, because this is on Facebook.
Well, we still got all that stuff in there.
Yeah, you got all that.
Why don't we go in the other one?
Okay, all that Fourth of July stuff's still in there. Are they done with that floor?
Regular city council meeting.
Not quite.
Okay, so we still can't put this stuff out there yet?
I was supposed to be.
Um, we might be able to...
Oh, yeah, out here, I think.
Because that isn't one of the places I don't think they have left to do.
Coming that trim right up, stuff along the edge, as long as you keep it away from that, then get there and glue that down. Some places it's not glued down.
I see in the break room that's...
Yeah, they haven't got that, yeah.
Yeah, they just cut it and didn't glue it, I think.
Charlie left before I could remind him that we have not received his check.
All right, we'll just go across the hall. Take that long.
I couldn't remember the phone.
I found it.
And I couldn't get in that program.
I found the one you sent me.
But I saw in February where I asked Nancy to send me the link.
Okay.
So I figured I did it in February.
Okay. I found where you sent it.
Good.
It was in that list. But it was funny, because then F&amp;M wasn't on the list.